Strung all the way from our Aboriginal grounds there in New York, New Jersey, and the state of Delaware. Clear across the United States, some of them went down to Mexico. I know, I mean, we got Delawares up in Idaho, we got Delawares in Kansas, we got... But they're not members of our tribe, a lot of them. And why aren't they members of our tribe? It's because of our constitution, the way I understand it. This tribe, this particular, our folks, all can trace their ancestry back to that, what, 1907?
1904 Delaware per capita.
Per capita role. Anyway, that particular document, that don't mean that, that does not mean that the people in Idaho are not Delawares. Does not mean that the people... I'll give you an example. I had a friend that's, he's from New Jersey, and he's one of those Nanicoques. He's a Nanicoque Indian. You cannot tell him he's not Delaware. In fact, he'll start throwing blows if you try to tell him that he isn't Delaware. He is Delaware, meaning a Nanicoque Delaware. And so are these people, but they're not members of our tribe. What makes a member of a tribe is a people that are all related and practice the same culture. We have lost so much of our own culture. We're coming apart. Our tribe's coming apart. You think these people that moved from Idaho have the same culture that we do? I doubt it. We don't even, we're struggling to keep our culture. I'm sure they haven't lost much of their Delaware culture since they left the main group of people which our folks were members of, too. The people that went, that go clear back to New Jersey and along that Delaware River Valley. I'd just like to point that out, that I'm sorry for those people, that they've lost their pride, they've lost their tribe. But in a sense, there's something to the adage that you are responsible for the sins of your ancestors. And I don't mean your ancestors were sin, but your ancestors made a decision to leave the main group. Our ancestors didn't. That's the big difference, and we tried to keep our culture together.
Jack, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you believe that your two sons that live in California are not members of our tribe?
No, I was saying that, yeah, according to our constitution, they are. According to our constitution.
Yes, you're recognized.
The decision on the move from Lawrence. The tribe was given the choice, the families were given the choice, to stay Delaware or to become citizens of the United States. There were some late ones that stayed up there, tried to fight it. The health cares and the fawries were in two of those families, traditionalist families. But they got run out. The ones that became citizens stayed up and found out that the whites still didn't like them. So they migrated, got out of the area. Some stayed around, but those families still became citizens. They threw the tribe away. They wanted to become citizens. Their choice. That goes down to their families now. And Jack, that thing, the sins of the father, falls down. And I'm sorry on that, but that choice was made there. Now, we operate off the rules from 1904, 1906 Dawes rule. We would have to throw that away constitutionally, make an amendment, a two-thirds vote of the voting membership of our tribe, to even make that constitutional amendment. And we would have to go to a different set of rules, which included them up there at that time, before they gave up their tribal membership. Would we not?
Well, I don't think we would have to throw away the 1904 Delaware per capita payment role. But I do think we'd have to add to that a statement that either, that the Pratt role last taken in Kansas, of which both of these groups were members of, would have to be added.
Was that added if the families gave up their citizenship?
Yeah. Are we not Delawares because we became citizens? Or my grandmother became a citizen of the United States in 1904? Is she not a Delaware?
I'm looking at the law. I'm not going by the limit that you're trying to stay. Whether she Delaware or not, but did she give up her citizenship as a tribe? Yes, she did. You know, that's a fact. But yes, she's still Delaware by blood, but according to the role, she's not a member of the tribe. See what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, but you're right. According to our constitution and our base role, these people are not a member of our tribe. That's obvious. But it's not so obvious that they can't be members. They can be if a majority of our people want to accept them as that.
After redoing our constitution?
Yeah. If a majority of our people wanted to accept us redoing the constitution.
Then because the constitution has to be redone, passed by remembering the vote of the people.
Absolutely.
Then a resolution made to the people to accept these people on the present day roles, according to 1904 per capita. Correct?
I don't think we can ever get above the 1904 per capita payment role, John.
Was that what we brought?
No, that's not, that's not the question. The question is making our base role the 1904 per capita payment role, and each of the members of the Kansas Delawares and Idaho Delawares whose ancestors were on the Pratt role.
What about Idaho? I mean, not Idaho, but Indiana?
Well, Indiana, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York.
Canada?
Canada.
Those people were never on any role that I am aware of.
And for one point of information that I have left, no Nanicoque are not Delaware. You can't go combine the two and call yourself Nanicoque, Linnin, and Lenape, then come down here, steal our culture, our songs, go to the Smithsonian, get my grandmother's picture out of the Smithsonian, use it on their website claiming she's Nanicoque.
Well, John, of course, I totally agree with you there. I mean, there's no way trying to say that the Nanicoque, Linnin, and Lenape have anything to do with Kansas and Idaho Delawares. None of those people back east can prove that they got a drop of Delaware blood.
That's fact. But what I'm looking at here is what all's gonna have to be done to our constitution. And me, I'm still, if you're on the law part, that's not my area expert. But I have questions on it. You know, because like I say, but either way, I can spout till I'm blue. Boy, that'd be different. But either way, till I run out of bread, it's still a matter for the people.
Absolutely. That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
You know, I don't know. I agree with Chet that we need to entertain the, that we need to entertain letting these blood people back in our role. It may, maybe the law can't be fixed, but it can be happened. I don't even know. I'm, I'm like John, I don't have any expertise in the law. But I have charity for them, and they, they can prove where they descended from, that from the same ancestors that we descended from, if you go back far enough. And we have to, I think that the chief is being broadminded to entertain this and put it in part in our constitutional reform.
Chief Justice, Don Mason.
I'm kind of undecided about something, but I do have two words. Ordinum one is...
How about to the mic?
All right. Word. I'm still someone undecided about this, but I have two concerns. Concern one is this, and that is, if we, one is, I don't know, BIA would allow us to reopen the 1904 role and start letting people in. That's one. Two is, another thing is, is let's say this, what if they did allow us to do that? If that happens, that becomes a slippery slope, and then you're gonna have an old avalanche, who knows how many people coming in? And that's why it has me worried about it. Another thing, too, is, okay, let's say that they don't allow us to add them to the 1904 role, but the tribe goes ahead and adopts the Idaho and Kansas folks back in. Then what happens is, is I think you're laying the seeds to an internal civil war. Because what will happen is, the ones who can trace their lineage back to the 1904 roles will be entitled to tribal services, and the ones who were adopted, I don't think would be entitled to tribal services. And then you're gonna be laying the seeds to an internal civil war within the tribe between those who are on the 1904 role opposed to those who were adopted, yet they're not on the role and they're not getting services. So that, I think is dangerous.
I agree with you there. And there's several people who would agree with that. Patis French.
Just want to bring up, in 1999, Tri-County Tech, the issue of Kansas, we re-adopted some of the people, was brought up to the general council floor, it was voted down at that time. Five years ago or so, when I was head of the elders committee, we took an informal poll vote, we voted it down. So that's twice. To get any changes to roles, take a congressional act to have any changes made to this role. It's not just an everyday happening thing. It'd be very, very difficult to get done. That's us wanting to throw at it.
I, well, if you're talking about changing the Delaware per capita payment role or the Dawes enrollment, I could tell you, that is not going to happen, absolutely. But I don't think that that has to happen in order to bring these people in. Well, I don't know. How many times since the 1951, general counsel had to vote yes? Once.
First of all, I thank you for discussing this today and for your words, especially understanding the great difficulty that it might be to bring us in. For my great-grandchildren's sake, I think these words need to be spoken, and everyone is a good one and right to be said. One thing I wanted to mention is, I talked about social injustice. I don't think people had the same type of choice back in the day that we have now. I believe that the genocide was incredible, and that the survivors knew hunger like we know being full today. I know that my ancestors came out here, and they paid into the fund, and the Cherokees didn't give us our land. We had no choice. We had no land. We went into the West, and the government did the same thing they'd been doing all along, and our people began to die of malnutrition and sickness. These are the injustices that have been done, our people, to our people when we were still all the people. I honor the Delaware tribe in this land that I stand on, that's your land. And I thank you for speaking what's on your heart, whether it be for us or against us, the gifts that we have been given simply by being here on your land. We haven't taken any songs back with us. We haven't taken any dances. We're not like the New Jersey people. But we have been enriched by hearing your voices and your songs, your drums, and being part of your dances. We have gratitude and thanks for that, and also your weighing of this important decision. Thank you.
I would just like to make a statement about, Jack, I wasn't raised as Delaware. I was raised as white man, white person. I do qualify for Delaware. To me, Delaware is a blood relationship. If we can prove our Delaware ancestry, I think you're a Delaware. As far as the role that we're using to determine who's Delaware, who's a member of the tribe, if the constitution changes that to something that proves the people come from a Delaware background, I don't see a thing wrong with that. But if you're telling me I'm not Delaware, you and I are gonna be fighting. Because I am Delaware, I think I contributed to the Delaware tribe, and I feel like I'm a Delaware. So what you're telling me is, I'm not a Delaware because I didn't raise, wasn't raised in the Delaware tradition.
Who, who told you?
You told me that. You just said that.
That's not true.
You're saying that if you didn't remember the customs, I'm learning the customs.
I'm saying you're not on that role. Your folks were on the role.
My ancestors are on the role, but their blood role is Delaware's. And that role doesn't mean anything to me. The fact that I'm a Delaware means something.
It's in the Constitution.
It does.
And you're a tribal judge, and the Constitution doesn't mean anything to you? I think you should give up your position.
I said the role doesn't mean anything to me, being a Delaware. I would be a Delaware if I weren't on the role.
Hey, I was trying to tell you, I've got a good buddy that's a Nanicoque, Delaware.
He can't?
You can't tell him he's not Delaware. He will fight you.
I didn't say he wasn't Delaware. But I'm saying...
Well, you're saying, you're saying that you're not, that I think you're not Delaware. That's not true.
But the reason you think I'm Delaware is because my ancestors were on that role, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's next to the constitution?
No, 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 I'm sorry. That's not, that's the case. I think that you're not a member of our tribe. It's not that you're not Delaware. I think that you're Delaware, but if you're not on that role, you're not a member of this tribe.
My ancestors on the role, and the reason...
Okay, you're a member. What, I mean, what, then what?
And the reason, the reason you're saying I'm a member is because the constitution says that if you go back to that role, you're a member. I'm saying if our constitution changes, then that can bring in people, as long as they can prove their ancestry into the Delaware tribe.
True.
And yes, I'm Delaware. Don't tell me I'm not Delaware.
Hey, I'm not telling you, that's your start to get a message off. I'm not telling you I'm not Delaware.
I wanna get you with you.
I'm not coming up with that.
I wanna get you pissed off, because you're doing that to me. But that's it.
Okay, well, let's fight.
Saint Seven Lands up there, I guess they want anything.
What I would like to know, we've already established that the membership in this tribe is based on a role, which Idaho and Kansas people do not have a membership in our tribe. Tell me what is your reason you want to become a member of this tribe? What benefit is it to you? Why? Give me a reason why.
I'm here for my children. I want my children to be...
They know they're Delaware. They know that. What is the membership got to do with you wanting to become?
I don't need benefits. I have a great job. I don't need... I have physical grades that people have that. I want my children to grow, I want my children to learn the dance, my children to read the music, that's what I want.
They already got that, you given them that. They know they're Delaware. They know they're Delaware, they know they're from Kansas, they know they're from Idaho, they should know what, how they came from the East Coast and traveled to the home state. So the benefit of joining this tribe is what?
You can only be an Indian in name only for so long, because we are losing the little that we have left. What you're looking at is people in desperation. You're looking at the final wave on shore, just the smallest little wave we have. Our leadership is getting old, our needy are becoming poor, poor.
But you're saying you're losing that, but then again, if you became members of this tribe, you would have to be under the tribal council here.
That's right.
What benefits would that have to you in Kansas or Idaho? You say you don't want that, you don't want it.
No, 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 the benefits, the benefits are plenty. First of all, it's being able to go to the UTA hospital, it's being able to expand program to the needy. What it has to do is, many people, many people don't accept us, many people don't accept us as Delawares. Those of us who are relatives here in Oklahoma know our past. That's a very rare thing. Many people say that because the US government does not recognize us as Indians, that we are not Indians.
You don't think we're different?
We know different, but we have no right, I have no right, I have no ability to get a job down at the local tribe because of preference. I have no right under the law to even say that I'm an Indian. That is, that is true. I've been disqualified, and many of our people. And so, because of this, in this era of saying, oh, you guys are Indians, but you're not Indians, you're not federally recognized, the government doesn't recognize you because you're not Indians, and so you're not Indians. Those are the things that we're up against. We formed little corporations to try to steer our people, but we have no funding. When we all received payments for loss of Delaware hunting land, when you did, that went to our, to tribal members. That could not go to a parent tribal organization that would wisely allocate that money to the needy, to the poor, to the orphans, to our children who need educated. Instead, it went as if water poured into dry sand, it dissipated and was no more.
But then again, do you realize that it was your parents, your ancestors, who made that decision?
My, the decisions, we believe, were made under duress as a result, as a result of great injustice, and my ancestors, I have my, I've made my lot with Kansas people. I stand with them. And so I can only speak for my ancestors that got jacked in 1902, when the Cherokees didn't allow us to have our land. We were told by the government to go to Wyoming, that our land would be there, Montana. We went there, and they said, we don't have anything to do with you guys. Our people began to die, and our, and our living ancestor, our last living ancestor that was living out here in Oklahoma, she died. She died before the 1906 rules.
But our ancestors went to the very same thing. Very same thing. But we chose to move down here. You chose to stay.
We drove down here and paid into the vote.
Your ancestors did. What did you say?
Suzie, I'm, Andrew, there's another hand up there, Bella Jane.
Let me say it again. My great-grandfather's name is...
We can't hear you.
He was not on the road. It was a native way to think seven generations into the future and do for those. And you put my grandma on there. Man, also, let me tell you this. You talking about brokerage, something? I had come here a year and been trying to make some brokerage, because, oh, yes, I live in Texas. So I'm gonna look for some, yeah, for a broker.
Yes.
I just have one question to ask. My ancestors were on the role, and my ancestors were also kids Delaware. Question I have to ask is, what are you afraid of? What is your fear? We have the same wants, the same needs that you have. We have the same pride. We're not coming in to infiltrate like the Deelish. We're Delaware, haven't we? What's the fear? I turn my advocation into day, because like I said, my ancestors were on the Dawes. I came with a friend in Kansas Delaware first, and I'll tell you, you're all Delaware, and I'll bet you like and prove, each and every one of you are related to me. My ancestor was Louis Ketchum and Elizabeth Sager Ketchum, who are in the second group coming here. In 1950, I had to go to law to prove that they, them and their children and grandchildren belong to you. That's a white lie. This is a white lie of thinking. I don't understand it. We're Delaware. And that's all I had to say.
Who's got the hand up now? Mary? I can just barely see. Okay. Cheese landing creek.
Cheese landing creek.
Rebecca Lucas, who was in Texas, back there, was on the rolls up until she died in 1898. She was not allowed to be on the rolls in 1904 or 1906. As she had been alive, we wouldn't be sitting here arguing about it. We would have, we would have gone with you. She was issued land in Burgess, on the Burgess River. Reason that the people left was in 1906, the Cherokees cut up all freemans and all mixed marriages. They cut them up. Nine, uh, nine hundred and twenty-eight, nine hundred and fifteen of the Delawares that were on those rolls, once it remake, once it was removed per law by Congress, because they were mixed. There was two hundred and some Delawares on those rolls that went into 1906 and 1904. The rest of us was told, get lost, basically. I'm, I'm proud of my Delaware heritage, always have been. I've been chief of the Delawares of Idaho, have been for the past ten years. I've been, I've been following along, trying to get us into a, the tribe. And so far, everything we've done has been, been met with. No. The government says, well, you're not a tribe. Sure, we're not a tribe. We're family. We all, we all are related in the band. All of us are related. My great, great grandfather had fourteen kids. Rebecca Lucas had one daughter. She, this cover came on down. We're all related by blood as one whole family. We did not elect to stay our, our goal. We were told to go. We did not sign away any of our rights as a Delaware to anybody. So, show me where we signed it. All we're asking is to come back to the tribe that we belong to. What we can offer is just that, to come on back. Then we can discuss what we can offer. Because we can't offer nothing. Because we're not recognized. So, what can we offer? Our sweat, blood, tears. You know, what will it offer? You want us to do something? All you gotta do is tell us. We came here basically because we want to come back to the people that we belong to. I'm related to half the council up there already, and I can prove it. I'm related to a lot of you out here, and I can prove it. I don't understand. She was on the rolls. She died. Died for a bit. She died nineteen, eighteen, eighteen ninety-eight. For she to live another eight years, I wouldn't be standing here arguing with you or talking to you about it. I would have been like you, like you, like everybody else this room. I would have been recognized. I would have had my glory.
Excuse me. I have a, I have a question regarding what you stated there. Can you clarify? You just stated that you're related to half of the council up here? Did I hear you clearly on that? What is that paper? And, and can you tell me which members of the council you're related to?
I'm related to, uh, the, the, uh, the Nets. And you, you just, through the, through the, uh, Ketchum. Through that, I'm related to a lot of other members.
Okay, I was just wanting to clarify since four of, the majority of this council is not related. So, I just wanted to find out who you were related to.
They're related within the family. Uh, you know, cousin married a family member from another family. It's not blood related, it's through the marriages.
Hey, thank you. I was just wanting clarification on your statement that I picked up on.
Uh, you know, I, I think that, uh, well, there's three of us on this council that are all Sir Coxey descendants. We know that. There's, there's three Sir Coxey descendants on this, on this council.
John Anderson Sir Coxey was my third great-grandfather. And, and, and you got a grandfather too.
Yeah. Well, the, the Sir Coxey that was the son of Chief Anderson is what I'm talking about. And he has some other sons named Sir Coxey, grandsons. Anyway, I think this Fish, Fish family, isn't that some of the fall leaves? No, it is not. Okay. I don't know where I heard that. What? Don't even go there? Okay.
Top of my-
I don't know any of your secrets, so.
I think we've all got to realize that about eighty percent of us are related to Kethawin Um, William Anderson. He was my fourth great-grandfather.
The Grinter, the Marshall Grinter, the Tiblo, Tiblo, and, and Fish, that was the family names.
Two justices.
You can have that copy in the paper if you want to keep it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You can have the copy in the paper if you want to keep it past long. If you have a couple of members or anybody else that's got any questions about the relationship and all that.
See, I've got a question that maybe you, you seem to be touching on it, see, you know, we're about, and that's why I'm asking, because I'm asking for a history of us. That is back in 1951, you said that there were some late members that came and that there was a general council that signed off on, I guess, a document or a question. What was the background on that? And did, did the VIA sign off on that?
Of course they had to. Of course. Now, the VIA would have to sign off on us. It's, it's a majority of our adult voting membership. Ask or, or put in our constitution and we're taking a meeting.
Oh, so it would require a constitutional amendment?
Oh, yeah, sure, certainly.
And then VIA had to sign off on a portion of money?
Well, no, it, it didn't require a constitutional amendment, but it, I think, if you want.
Constitutional?
Yeah.
Yeah, this time I think, yeah.
So, would the VIA be required to uphold our decision if there was a other story?
Sure.
Well, I don't know. When it comes to VIA, they do retain that right to review, and I don't know.
Well, and there's also other legal cases that might, uh, be affected by this. The 1950s ICC hearings, when the Kansas Delawares were asking for a portion of that, uh, payout, and unfortunately, never got it to the seventies and the eighties. Uh, but we had to go through, uh, you know, a series of, of horrible kind of treatment and then come up with the trust document to be able to satisfy the, the VIA. So, I mean, your point is, well, it's like, and then we have to go back and, and kind of, in a way, we said, no, they're not part of our tribe. And the legislative branch of the federal government said, no, no, they're not part of your tribe. And then the judge said, they're not part of your tribe. And they said it based on the fact that, you know, biology doesn't make an Indian. That's what, I'm not saying that, but that's what they said. In the Weeks case, that a tribe is a group of people with a language and a culture and loyalty to a particular group that removes from one place to another and remains a sovereignty. Individuals, they have chosen to stay or, I think in Idaho's case, you know, left pretty quickly because they couldn't, you know, uh, attain the land, but they were not eager to that payout for that reason. So, there's a lot more to this, I think, than just, you know, the basics, can we bring them in?
This is what turns me, because I think this has got more layers than what it appears. And we have a problem with that, and I can't open a roll as well. And quite frankly, you know, I don't trust the VIA because they're, they're, you know, uh, bipolar in how they approach things. So, you know, I, I don't know. I'm not comfortable with this.
One of the things I wanted to say, Dawn, was, uh, the, the Idahos and the Kansas both got those, those papers. So, they were recognized by the government at that time as a story. The Kansas-
Kansas did too.
They got them. They got the money.
Sure, of course. The, the Kansas and Idaho Delawares have the same per capita payment that our people did.
Yes, we did.
They, they just didn't get the ten percent home back that our tribe did.
Yes, we did. We actually did accept home back, but we were staying cash later on.
There's, there's, there's a hand up somewhere, so I can't hear.
We need to hold down some of the side conversations. It's hard to hear up here. Can you come up to the, can you come up to the microphone, huh? Please.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. My name is Alindora Lowe. I am part of the Kansas Delaware. And my purpose also of, um, asking for, um, that, to be back in the tribe is to reclaim what was lost to our ancestors. I know you guys have heard that over and over again. But it was a disservice. It was an insult to the tribe overall, to all the Delaware of what had happened. I worked two jobs. This time, yesterday, I had just woke up in order to go to my two jobs, which I got off at seven AM, so I could drive out here. And it's in this meeting. But I am not here to take resources. I have a college degree. A lot of my family members have college degrees. We work hard. And we're just here to reclaim what was taken from everyone. And my ancestors, um, were younger when the tribe was down. And then, um, he still, um, the one who was on the list, Charles Ziegler. Then he had a daughter, Nora. He had a few different children. My great, great grandma. And she was born also in Indian Territory. Um, due to a separation between her mom and dad, then she was taken and raised by her mom, living as a white woman. But she did try to, um, get her kids, my uncle, my grandfather, Joseph Rayburn, um, schooled as an Indian. But it was denied because he wasn't considered Indian anymore. That was stripped from him. So, there are different reasons as to why, um, we are not considered Delaware. It's not just because, oh, they decided to just stay while everybody left. It's not that they just abandoned. There's numerous reasons. So, I just wanted to give my perspective on that. Thank you.
I'm Kim. Me, Irving. I'm Jim Grinter, Kansas Delaware. Though, like a lot of people, my great, great, great grandmother was here and buried south of Arlington. But she wasn't on, she died in eighteen seventy-five, so she's not on the nineteen forty list. But, um, I think the thing to me that's, this is, what has been discussed here is really important and historic and unprecedented, I think, to, for a people that was torn apart by the government over time. To bring this tribe back together is something that's never been done before. And I think, I'm, I'm glad that you're discussing it. It's really important. And, uh- I don't know. I think, I think it's a really good thing to bring everybody back together, put this back together, torn apart over decades. Makes sense.
You know, whether we want to admit it or not, in eighteen sixty-seven, the United States of America and a large majority of its Caucasian citizens wanted to get rid of all of us Native Americans and make us good white foreigners. As a matter of fact, it was the white society that came up with these roles, roles. I mean, in a, in a nutshell, I think most of the Kansas Delawares, the Idaho Delawares, they really want what we struggled from nineteen seventy-nine till nineteen ninety-six for. And again, from two thousand and four to two thousand and nine. They want to be members of a federally recognized tribe. That's us. And I fully admit, whether or not we do that is up to a majority vote of our adult voting membership. Does anything else need to be said?
Chad, I'll say one thing. It numbers, you know, what the federal government looks at is numbers. And they would, could bring another two thousand members right into our tribe, which would, which would mean, uh, more funding for our programs if we had another two thousand members. Is that, I mean, maybe that, I'm oversimplifying it, but-
I don't, I don't think you are at all. In eighteen sixty-seven, the Cherokee Nation, uh, according to an agreement that was forced on our people, the Cherokee Nation was worth one million and six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for thirteen thousand and five hundred and sixty-six people. Today, the Cherokee Nation takes in about nine hundred million a year. a year. And there's three hundred thousand of them. There is strength in numbers, whether we want to admit it or not.
And money.
My name is Deborah Gorges, and I belong to the Idaho Delaware. And I was asked last time I was here... My name is Deborah Gorges, and I belong to the Idaho Delaware. And the last time I was here, someone asked me, "What do I bring to the Delaware tribal Indians?" And I thought about that a long time. My mom thought about it. Thought about it last week. Decided I was going to write down what I've done to the Delaware tribe, to the Idaho people. And what I might have to honor to Delaware tribal Indians, fathers of them. And this is what I said. I served on the membership committee in Delaware's Idaho. I was a tribal council. I was on board of directors. I was on the constitutional committee. I was appointed chief of District Two. We divided the tribal membership from certain geographical area and then assigned a member of the tribal council to be the local contact. I was appointed director of health, education, and welfare while waiting for federal recognition. Number fifty-five. I consolidated all the tribal membership roles into alphabetic and numeric format on spreadsheets with a family surname across the top. The BIA's response said that our roles were the best-looking roles they'd seen in years. I worked on the Delaware Judgment Fund for the pre-borns and the active borns and had penis to all of us in six months. This required several of us working on this project, tracking down members entitled to payment and sifting out the ones who wanted a deceased person's portion after having to determine the heirs of the deceased. Not an easy task. I was appointed secretary to the chief and deputy chief for a number of years. I was the editor and staff of Delaware's Idaho newsletter for many years. I've donated jewelry pieces and I've made for the Delaware tribal Indians and also the Delawares of Idaho. And I've given a percentage of my sales to the gift shop here. I'm a giver and a doer and will continue to do so for as long as I can. I'm Delaware proud, and that's what I have to honor, Delaware tribal Indians.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We don't have to adjourn it down hall. Then somebody's, you've got your hand up.
For those of you all who do not know me, I'm Anna P. Kenny. And Susan Kaye asked, "What do they get?" They don't want our programs, you know? Well, they get their culture back. We went to Wisconsin. They didn't know what shell-shaking was. They didn't know what social dances were. But what happens is, somebody in California is going to say that they're wannabe, trying to steal our stuff because they don't know what's going on politically. If they go down to our powwow and do the duck dance of theirs. But if they're a part of our tribe, then it doesn't matter. They get to use our dances, no matter what. We taught those Wisconsin people that they didn't steal it. We taught them that in their Delaware. They're benefiting from this because of culture, not because of programs or funding. They are not a legally recognized tribe, so they can't use the dances that we do or the social dances. So they're benefiting from culture, not from programs or funding. When I showed some of the Kansas and Wisconsin people shell-shaking, they loved it. They were extremely happy. I know pretty much the whole council went down to Wisconsin. So they're benefiting from culture in this. And that's really what they want, is what I'm understanding. Because they don't have that. The Wisconsins lost the social dances, but they didn't lose the full powwow. These people have lost both. That's what they want back. Thank you.
Kenny, I am sorry. I think you had something you wanted to speak on.
Give them a report.
It is.
So the veterans had a, we hosted a cookout, more or less, in fellowship Delaware War Mothers October the tenth. Then some of us did the, your color guard brought in the colors for the prior powwow. And we had some, Curtis Sinica was the emcee at American Legion Post Number One in Tulsa for fundraising. And he did a good job. And I'd like to present the Mounted Eagle to our Lenape Archives and Museum of...
Kenny, the whole tribe wants to thank you for that gift to the museum.
To the tribe.
And to the tribe. And I also heard yesterday from Anita that we received several gifts from the Parks families and correct Anita. Did you bring them up here today?
I brought, I brought, I brought the beads if you wanted to see. Yes, I brought a few other pieces.
I, I would suggest that those that are interested would stop by and look at what Anita got gifted to us yesterday. It's a string of Wampum beads, as I understand it, that date all the way back to the sixteen hundreds. That is, along with this Mounted Eagle, are truly gifts that the tribe deserves.
There's a hundred and sixty-seven beads on it.
How many of them are purple?
All of them.
Oh, they're all purple? And they're worth three hundred and thirty-four beaver pails. In the old way, thank you.
And Leslie has the matching pair set. Oh, Leslie's left. That was numerous folly fathers, I think. It was her grandpa's. And we put them side by side. And she has, she has a matching set.
Very good.
I'd like to thank everybody that's left here from the staff for putting up with a long town hall meeting. And would suggest that I'll stay here and visit as long as anybody wants to, but let's formally close the town hall meeting. Talk privately or however.